Call to order, City of Riverbank Planning Commission Meeting, April 16th, 2019. Do we have a roll call, Janet?
Chair Dinan.
Here.
Vice Chair Ball.
Present.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
And then, just to note, Melissa Hughes is absent, excused. Commissioner Mallory.
Here.
Fenrich. And our alternate, Steve Link.
Here.
Thank you, Janet. Any Planning Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Hearing none, open the meeting up for public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board. Do we have any public comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll move it to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commissioner for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Any commissioners wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Item 2.1, posting of the agenda. The agenda for the April 16th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting was posted on the City Community Center bulletin board, City Hall North and South bulletin boards, the post office, city website, and email to the library on April 12th, 2019. Item 2.2, approval of the agenda. This provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. Any wishes to mess with the agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I motion to approve the calendar for March.
I second.
Can we get a roll call vote, please, Janet?
Chair Dinan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Janet. Planning Commission Public Hearings, Item 3.1, Development Agreement Number 01-2019 and Conditional Use Permit 02-2019/Department File Number 19-0001 hyphen Canna, C-A-N-N-A, plus RISE, R-I-S-E. The project consists of a development agreement and a conditional use permit to permit a cannabis distribution facility, correction, a cannabis distribution facility, parent wholesale to wholesale, closed parent, at 5729 Terminal Avenue, parent APN 075-020-016, closed parent. The project site consists of an existing approximately 6,000 square foot building on an industrial parcel of approximately one acre in size. Parking lot and landscaping were previously installed. The project site has a general plan land use designation of individual/business park and his own light industrial, M-1. Donna, would you like to make your presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. As you stated, this is a development agreement and a conditional use permit for a distribution facility. Whoops, that's not what I want. This is wrong. Just do the... There you go, just the button. Okay. Okay. Technologically challenged. Okay, so it's a development agreement and a conditional use permit. As stated before, there are no exterior changes to the building. There is existing parking, existing landscaping, and no signage is proposed. Whoops, wrong way. Okay, you just do it. Okay, so here's the aerial of the project. It's a... There's a pin on the building right now showing the address. As you can see, there is some residential uses to the north, to the east, and a little to the south. On the west side is the railroad yards, and this parcel is the last parcel on that side of the street within city limits. Here's another view of the project aerial. The building there is in the center, and most of the activity... Well, the items that you see there belong to the landlord, and those are being cleared out. The... Most of the activity will occur at the rear of the building where there are doors that... Industrial-type doors that can be lifted up. And you can see that there is a larger area between it and the railroad tracks. There are some industrial parcels to the south and some storage to the north. Next. Thank you. It's a little over 2,500 square feet as a crow flies to the closest school. Here's a site plan. Terminal avenue is at the front of the building. The parking spaces there are where the employees will park. They propose having five to six of those little sprinter vans deliver and take out the project... Product. Those will be coming in off of terminal and going around to the rear of the building where they have different security measures set up. There'll be different badges where people can... Like, the driver can come into the parking area inside for unloading but will not be able to access the rest of the facility. So that's one security feature that they have, is different areas of the building will be limited to certain people. Here's a floor plan of the building. There's a couple offices, the restroom, a mezzanine for storage. The wide-open area will be... Where the equipment will be that will package the product. So what we're looking at is, the product will come in in bulk, and then it has to be tested by a state-licensed laboratory. Once that is accomplished, then the labels will be prepared, and then those have to be sent off to the state to be approved. Once all that is done, then the project can be, through the use of the machinery, put into its individual packages. And my understanding is that there will be some nitrogen involved in the process that will be part of the packaging to keep the product stable and fresh. Here's the front elevation that can be seen from Terminal Avenue. Here's looking on Terminal but a little bit south. You can see there's a covered portion in the back, and there's some existing fencing, but there will be more fencing on the property, both inside and outside, to ensure that the project is secure. Okay, as I mentioned, this is the process. The product arrives and is tested by the lab. The state approves the test results, and labels are created. The state approves the labels, the product is packaged, and then the products are distributed wholesale. This is... That's okay. This is not a storefront. There will be no members of the public coming and going through the building. So the development agreement is very similar to the agreements we already have with our dispensaries, Flavors, and Riverbank Wellness. Only this term is five years. It's the term that the city believes the business will be able to get running and get equipment installed and get up on their feet and allow us to, you know, see how they're doing. The public benefit fee is, for the year one, $6,000 or 4% of the grocery receipts. That's per month, like you see with the dispensaries, and they have a little bit different numbers. Only this time, we're going to collect by quarter rather than by month, because it's going to take some time for them to, you know, get going and get the product out there, get the invoices taken care of. Year two will be $10,000 a month or 5% of the grocery receipts. Year three is $15,000, or... Year three through five is $15,000 or 5% of the grocery receipts. Some of you may remember my discussion about the Flavors and how they were doing at the one-year mark of their DA, if you came to the council meeting or saw those staff reports. Flavors, for example, only paid their flat fee the very first month and have been paying the grocery receipts ever since. So we are hopeful that they'll be successful, and the city will be successful as well. So in order to approve the DA, these findings have to be met. That is consistent with the general plan. It is in an industrial area. It's an industrial use, an industrial zoning. It's not detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the city. We believe that their security plan and their business plan are well-written, and we believe that this will be a successful business. This should not affect the orderly development or property values of the area. For example, with Flavors, there was some citizens that were concerned that their property values would decline, but in watching Zillow and some of the other online sites, that has proved to not be the case. This must be consistent with these government codes, and our city attorneys have ensured that they are consistent with those codes. And it must contain a legal description of the property, which I did get from the applicant and is part of the DA. As far as the conditional use permit, as I'd mentioned before, this has to be wholesale to wholesale. The retail storefront is prohibited. If they tried to kind of morph it into a retail storefront, not only would the state have something to say about it, the city could revoke their permits. And so, this is a very expensive venture for them, and I fully believe that they will follow our direction. This also talks about the hours of construction when they do their tenant improvements to, you know, lessen the noise to the neighborhood. The exterior lighting conditions, they will have exterior lighting for safety reasons. Those need to be focused downward on the property and not the neighborhood. They need to hold the city harmless, and that's part of the DA and the conditional use permit. And just want to mention again that they have no plans at this time to do any signage. So conceivably, when you drive past the building on Terminal, you'll see exactly what's there now. A few cars in front for the employees and a blank industrial building. So any development agreement or use permit that concerns the regulation of cannabis has to be consistent with the guiding principle of the general plan, which is our city should be safe and healthy for our residents. And environmental-wise, through a secret analysis, it does qualify for a categorical exemption, because this involves an existing facility with no expansion of the facility and will not have a significant effect on the environment. The site is pretty much paved over, so there are no bugs or bunnies on the site that we need to protect. So after, you know, in-depth analysis, the staff recommends that you adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2019-009. That would recommend to the city council that they adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement between the city and the business owners, and then adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2019-010, which would approve the conditional use permit for cannery. There is one thing that I did skip over. Got to talking too fast. We did receive a letter from a neighbor who I believe got one of the 300-foot notices, who had some... It came in after your packets were already out, and there was concerns about traffic, smell, safety, you know, it was concerned that there could be a robbery there. And there was a fourth one. Let me look real quick and make sure I touch it all. Okay, so, yeah, traffic, crime, smell, and property values were concerns. And then at a minute to five today, I did get another email from someone who had concern with the length of the DA. They thought... They were wondering if maybe the five years might be too much. And that's the only public comments that I've received on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. This is a public hearing. Members of the public are invited to make comments at this time. The same ground rules will apply, a limit of five minutes per person. And please state your name and city of residence, if you'd come up to the podium, please.
I'm sorry, Donna, can I ask you a couple quick questions?
By the rules, we need to wait until...
We did submit a letter by email, and Donna did recite my concerns. However, there was one major concern that I did want to bring up, and there's a school bus stop there that's been there for over 25 years on the corner of Terminal and Rich Lane. And there... They pick up the children in the morning, and they have two drop-offs in the afternoon. I don't think that's a nice place for schoolchildren, especially kindergarteners and elementary school, to walk home across business as such as this, or parents will be waiting there. And I just feel like there's a proper place for this type of a business, and next to residential and school buses is not the place for that. So I highly oppose this type of a business to go there. Okay?
Thank you for your comments.
No, thank you.
Are there any other public comments at this time?
I live downtown, but whatever happens with this project is going to have an impact downtown, because the city's also looking at a huge one in the cannery site.
Would you state your name, please?
Sorry, Evelyn. My concern with this thing is not ju... I have asked for, weeks ago, to look at the file, and I was told on the 11th it would be available. When I am Monday for it, I was told, no, I had to go through Annabelle, so now I have to wait. I asked for the file because looking in the packet, there were things I thought should be there that were not there, especially when you're talking about... Because it looks, Mr. V., it looks like there's going to be a distribution come in, go out. But then, if you keep reading it, you see these little things pop up in there. They're going to be processing to package it because they're using nitrogen. We don't know what else they're using. That's the only thing that I have heard from the city they're using. There could be other things. Apparently, they're going to have a testing lab there. We don't know what that entails, what they're going to be doing with that. That stuff should be part of this packet. You can't... You don't... I mean, we need to know more than what's in that packet. The biggest problem with this thing is, when the city council approved the marijuana ordinance, they touched on personal use, they touched on commercial use, which is the dispensaries that we have now, they touched on lab testing, cultivation, and delivery, which was the running in and out to houses and stuff like that type of delivery, which they're opposing. They didn't touch on this distribution. There's no guidelines in there for this distribution facility like they're planning. And it's kind of like the cart before the horse. I think you need the city council to go back and add this in there so you have guidelines before you can okay it. I mean, are you going to set a precedent by okaying it without any guidelines, and then they're grandfathered in? I don't know how that works. But there's a lot of stuff that should be in there. Especially, if they're going to use nitrogen, and we don't know what other thing gases they're going to use, or chemicals, then you have questions with emissions, with odors. That stuff needs to be considered by the council. They need to look into this and set the guidelines for it first.
Thank you.
Can I have one more comment?
You have one minute?
Pardon me?
You have one minute?
One minute, okay, no problem. I understood that the marijuana will be... Or the product will be coming in in bulk, and so it basically sounds like they're going to be manufacturing it there? Is that what it is, rather than just a distribution warehouse?
I don't know. There's no manufacturing of marijuana. If I'm reading the background information correctly, the marijuana comes in and is tested and labeled, and then goes back out, but they don't grow the marijuana at the site.
I know they don't grow it, but do they process it in any way?
Well, they test it.
They just test it? And then how does it go out, and what kind of type of packaging?
Well, that... We'll talk about that when we go off the public hearing, because I have that same question. I'm sorry?
So you... Chair, if you want, we can address those questions now or later, but specifically as it relates to packaging, there's very specific requirements under state law for packaging for any type of commercial cannabis use. So the city can't require anything less than those very strict standards, and they're required in order to maintain their permit at the state level to meet those requirements.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So we're actually in a residential area, right?
Sir, can we get your name and city of residence?
Excuse me, sir. My name is Don Avey.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're basically in a residential area within 300 feet of residential homes, 600 feet from the rest of the homes. What is the guidelines for cannabis and school drop-offs and pickups that the City of Riverbank has established?
The property itself has been zoned light industrial, M1.
Okay.
Okay, and that's...
Okay, but right across the street is residential, 300 feet, right?
I understand that, yes. You're correct. But the backup package has explained the general plan procedures and guidelines that are being followed, and the things that are in place to protect the residential values that are existing now. There are going to be impacts, and those are addressed in this fee that is being charged to the applicants.
To the city.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And Donna, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure. The city's adopted ordinance requires cannabis uses to be 600 feet from a school, minimum, 600 feet from a commercial daycare facility, and 600 feet from a teen center.
Okay. And, okay, so 300 feet, and I have my granddaughter at my house, doesn't account for anything?
Not under the present guidelines.
Not really?
No.
No? Hmm. How about your granddaughter, or yours? Doesn't really matter, huh? I understand the city stands to benefit substantially from cannabis, but... And I really don't care if people smoke weed. I really don't. But I believe there's a place for it, and there's a place to put the processing plants. It's not in a residential area. It's in an industrial area, just like the city of Modesto, Turlock, all the other cities have done. I really don't think it needs to be in a residential area.
Let me also say, sir, that when you say, "We don't want you to think that we don't care about you and your granddaughter, or my granddaughter, or anybody's," that's why we're having a public hearing, to get comments.
And that's why I'm here, sir.
Yeah, so we appreciate what you're saying, and we are hearing you.
All right. Okay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. One minute.
When I said processing or preparing, when I talked with Donna, she told me about the nitrogen, she told me about them doing something with the buds and preparing them or processing them before they were packaged. I don't know what else they're going to have to do something to, this or that, too, before they put in the package either, and nobody's going to know, because you don't have anything in writing from them showing what they're doing, their processing. I can tell you, but you need something in writing showing exactly what they can do. That way, if they do something they're not supposed to do, you have recourse. They're not going to have any recourse.
And I think, yeah, we heard you the first time. We're still in the public hearing. I noticed some folks just came in. If there's anyone else that wants to address the commission, now's the time. Hearing none will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Steve?
Robert. Robert, I'm sorry. Donna, will the full perimeter of the wall of the building have a fence around it? Will any part of the exterior wall be accessible? Will it all be fenced in?
I don't believe there's fencing planned, excuse me, for the existing parking lot wall, but I don't believe there will be access to other sides of the building.
Okay. And is there... Or do you know if there's any type of air filtration system that's going to be put in place to prevent odors from getting out of the building?
That... Excuse me. My understanding from the equipment that we've discussed with the applicant is more the processing side of... Not processing, but the packaging side of things. The applicant is here, if you would like more details on the air system, but this should be a closed building. They should be able to have the... They should be able to have the product, product inside, no open windows, no way for the amount that they will have there to cause a problem. Evelyn had contacted me a couple earlier this month and asked, I thought she asked when the planning commission packets would be ready, and I had told her on the 11th. I misunderstood her if she asked to see a file. She does know that all files have to be viewed through the city clerk's office, so that's probably why I misunderstood her. As far as the, the minor details of how this packaging works, like I mentioned, the applicant is here, but one of Evelyn's questions was also how much water would be used at the facility, and other than restrooms and a kitchen, there is no water involved in the process. The last thing they want to do is wash the product before they put it in packages because it's dried and it's cured. It will go into these smaller packages, either jars or childproof packaging, and the nitrogen, which is brought on those little Prox Air trucks that you see running around town, that's the type of containers and amounts that we're talking about. As soon as it's packaged, it goes into its boxes and will be taken off-site to a retail facility or another distribution facility. So it should be maintained as a closed system with the van coming in, the product being packaged, the van leaving. So it's not like a grow where you have to have these major air filtration systems.
Donna, what was the previous business that was in that building?
I believe it was windows or siding. It was some sort of construction outfit.
I believe it was an air conditioning, I think.
Air conditioning? Okay.
Energy-wise, a barnet company?
Would it be possible for you to put the overhead of the location of that? I want to see how close it really is to that residential area. Can you call that up again?
Go other way. There we go. Is this the one you were thinking of?
Yes. Now, the house that is within 300 feet, can we identify those homes?
Well, the, the parking lot looks like it might be about 40 or 50 feet. The street would have a width of about 50 feet. That first empty parcel, 100 maybe, and so the, the house next to it may be the closest. There is one to the north of the property that's sandwiched in between two industrial-type uses, this building and that storage, which I believe is a vehicle storage facility.
Okay, so everything on this side of terminal is zoned light industrial?
Correct.
And then I have another question. What size vehicles will be delivering the product?
Those little Sprinter vans that you see that, you know, have the doors that open in the back?
That's a larger-sized vehicle that will bring, be bringing material?
Yes. And, and they anticipate five to six a week.
Thank you.
And just for comparison, there are houses within 300 feet of Flavors, and with the information that I've been collecting from chief, that area hasn't had any problems, even though there's quite a bit more activity than this place is expected to have. In fact, crime has gone down due to the guards and the cameras on-site.
Yeah, one other thing, since the applicants are here, would someone be kind enough to just give us a step-by-step picture of actually how this is, the function that this is going to, is going to take place in this warehouse?
Okay.
Hello? Name is Julian. There? Okay, there we go. Yeah, so the process of our facility is wholesale to wholesale. We will have the vans, we, we will have the vans entering the opposite side of the residential, so we keep a lot of the foot traffic and a lot of the van movement away from the residential, which will be closest to this empty lot here. As it's going into the building, it will be unloaded on this far side, correct, that, that door there, industrial door. As it's going into that facility, it will be stored and packaged in eight-by-twenty storage containers. That will reduce the smell, so no. No product will actually be out and exposed in the facility, which will be minimal smell of the cannabis. Again, security fencing will also be set up in the facility for extra security. Again, they will be locked in eight-by-twenty containers, and once it goes into, after lab testing and it's stor- storaged, it goes into the packaging phase, and we're looking on only doing one pound of cannabis at a time, which is, reduces a lot of the smell also, and that'll be coming out of the storage containers.
How is it tested?
What's that?
How is it tested?
It's lab-tested from a third party, off-site. So it doesn't actually get, we, we quarantine it at our facility. So it doesn't actually get lab-tested at our facility. We contract with a third-party labs. So they come and pick up samples of the, of the product. We just quarantine it. And after it's packaged, then again, it leaves our facility. So our process is pretty much an in-and-out process. It's very, very minimal, no product laying out in the, in the facility. So the smell of the, of the product will be very, very minimal.
Who owns the vans?
We will.
Steve, do you have any questions? Mallory?
Yeah, I just want a little more information about a couple of things. You said the security fence, and can you just kind of make it more clear where that will be?
Yeah, so the security fencing will be within the facility. It will be around the storage containers for extra security, and then around the packaging equipment. And, and that is security fencing, one-inch mesh, nine-gauge, so it's, it's inside the building.
Oh, okay.
Yes, inside.
And, and the outside of the building, are, are you adding any additional fence, or?
We're not adding any additional fencing. We are contracting with Crime Tech for third-party monitoring, so we will have the sensors around the building, and the, the, the building will have cameras on the outside that will be monitored by a third party.
Let me see if I understand part of the process. The marijuana comes into your facility?
Yes.
Then it goes back out to be tested, and then it comes back in to be labeled, and then it goes back out again to a wholesaler?
That is, well, they come and take small samples. Yes, yes. Yeah, the lab comes to our facility and they pull samples.
Can I ask you a question about the external?
Yeah, yeah.
The fencing that's there will stay in place?
Okay.
My name is Jason Ochroff, and I'm advising on this project. What will take place is that the, the existing fencing outside will remain, and you can see that it, there's a portion that heads directly south, and then directly west, and meets up with the fence line for the rail yard, and then travels up to the northwest, okay? That southern area where you can see the door, that's going to be cleared out, and that's where delivery vehicles will come in, and then you can see the small white door in the lower left corner, that's the, that's the actual transport area. Then the, the existing fencing that you see on this particular diagram will remain, but it shall be enhanced. Okay? We're heights, we're, we're still getting some advisement from the security company as to what we can do with the existing fencing, okay? But we want to utilize all the existing fencing that's here at this property. Let's see. There is the option for adding a fence that goes from the marker on the middle of the building, okay, but go to the west edge of the building. Okay, so move the cursor a little bit to the left, to the edge of the building, and then from there to the fence line, it's strongly suggested that we add another fence right there, so that way the entire transport area in the southern section of the parking area, the paved area, will be secure. Okay? From the front section and the rear, and then anything that's taking place in the larger open area in the northwest section of the, of the property.
And that's on top of internal securities that, that will be in place with fencing, which will be controlling the product and the manufacturing hardware itself?
The, the internal, the internal cage itself will actually be, it'll be to DEA specifications for pharmaceutical storage.
I notice in the backup package, you've talked about construction on-site and the hours of, this will take place. How long will this process be, whatever construction you envision?
Yeah, very, very minimal. Lighting, cameras, and one, couple doors will go up, go up as far as the commercial, and then the security gating. Other than that, no big construction needed for this building.
I have another question. Can someone show me where the, the school bus bench is located in this map?
Mr. Avery, if you'd like to come up and point it out to us on the map, or...
Around 7:15 in the morning, children are picked up, and then, I believe, around 1:00 in the afternoon, kindergarteners are dropped off, and then again around 3:00.
Thank you. Do you have a route map set up where these vehicles are going to be coming from and to?
Yeah, they will be entering, like I said, this far side. As far as exiting the building, we will work with the city and, and Sheriff's Department on coordinating what the best route is for exits and entries to the building.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I just have another question about site improvements. I know John asked about new construction, and it sounds like there aren't a lot of exterior changes. I just wanted to confirm landscape staying the same? You, you don't have plans to change that out?
None, none at all, yes.
Okay. And I'm assuming the parking stalls are in, in good shape? They don't need to be repainted, or?
No, man.
Okay. Any plans to do any sort of painting of the building in the future, or everything's just staying as is?
Staying as is, yes.
Donna, is there anything you want to add at this point?
I have another question. About how many people do you think will be employed in the facility?
Between eight to 12.
Thank you.
Robert?
Will that be three shifts, or will it be eight to five?
Eight to five, yes. Yeah, one shift, yes.
Will it have security on-site during the weekends and after-hours?
Yeah, we will have a designated employee for security.
That's, there'll always be somebody there?
Yes, absolutely, yes. And then after-hours will be the third-party monitoring through Crime Tech.
When you say third-party monitoring, will there someone physically be on the site, or is this going to be cameras?
This will be cameras.
Well, actually, Steve had mentioned what I was thinking, that they, they open from eight to five, and that the bus is actually there over half an hour before that time, so the bus is there and gone before the business actually opens. So there shouldn't be any conflict with employee traffic either before or after their shift with the school bus.
Okay, if I understand and correct me if I'm wrong, the first step is for this commission to approve the conditional use permit. That's with our bailiwick. And then the second step is the recommendation to the city council, to the development agreement.
Is that the correct order? I would think it was the DA first.
The recommendation should be first, looking at the project. If the commission feels comfortable moving forward with a recommendation, we normally start with the DA first. Irrespective of your decision, you still have to make a decision on the CUP as well for purposes of any appeals, but we should start with the development agreement as the project first, and then we can talk about the conditions associated with the project.
Thank you.
Chair, if you don't mind, did have a couple of points of clarification for the commission based on some comments that we received from the public tonight. First, as the project applicant has said, they don't do any on-site testing. They are not allowed to under state law. You can't operate a commercial cannabis business and test. You can't, it's a conflict. You can't test your own product, whether it's cultivating, manufacturing, or selling. So they do have to contract out for those services, and again, those testing services are under very strict guidelines under the state, so they don't test every ounce of every product that comes in or out. It's a sample test, right? And so just to make sure that it conforms with state standards. So there won't be any testing done by this applicant on-site, because that will not be allowed. The other thing that I think the, the public mentioned is the idea of manufacturing, and the chair pointed out, there cannot be any manufacturing under this license type. They're literally processing the product as it comes in and as it goes out, and again, as I mentioned, the packaging requirements are very strict, though we can't make any changes to that. They have to meet state standards, and we anticipate there will probably be periodic reviews and on-site inspections from the, the, the state, at the state level, to make sure that they're operating correctly. Oh, and one last point, actually, I just thought about this as it relates to the conditional use permit. There've been some concerns raised about potential odor or smell issues. The conditions that are contained in this, in the draft CUP specifically say that the planning commission does have the ability to recall this project for review, depending on what has been deemed other adverse operating characteristics. So that could be one if there's any complaints from the neighbors that maybe the odor, it's, the odors are too strong, or that they're smelling anything. That is something that the city does have the ability to bring back and obviously work with the applicant first to make sure that everything's taken care of, but if it reaches at that level where it has not been remedied, it can come back to the city for review.
Thank you. Is there anything from the applicants that you'd like to say before we put this up for a vote?
Uh, no, just thank you for your time, and we appreciate you guys considering it. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Oh, well, entertain a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2019-010.
Is that the right, is that the right one? Is that the first one?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Get a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Chair Dynan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Link?
Yes.
That passes 5-0?
And I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-009, to approve the conditional use permit.
Motion to approve.
All set, yes.
Roll call vote, please, Janet.
Chair Dynan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Link?
Yes.
That also passes 5-0?
Thank you, Janet. Item four.
If I might, if I might, just so you know, so it did pass through planning commission, but it still needs to go to two meetings with the city council, so there is still time for people to comment. The tentative date for a city council meeting would be, I believe it's May 14th, and then May 23rd would be the second meeting. Get those dates right? That's my, let me check just to make sure I didn't give you the wrong dates here. And May 14th and May 28th would be the two city council days. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And I would like to thank those members of the public for their comments. We did hear you, and we appreciate them. Item 4.1, GP and HE report yearly presentation. Donna, are you going to read it word-for-word?
No.
Good evening again, Chair. So I don't know if you recall, last year at this time, we came before you with our annual general plan and housing element report. There is no action to be taken tonight. It's just a presentation to let you know what we are taking to the city council and that they will be reviewing. So government code requires us to do this by April 1st of each year, and where it's really important... important is if you don't have your housing element up to date, and your general plan up to date, and your reports on file, it really cuts you out of a lot of state grants. And so the city is pretty careful about trying to make sure that this is accomplished every year. So the report is submitted to the California Office of Planning and Research and the Department of Housing. They do accept the proposal, but they don't actually have to approve it. It's only our city council that authorizes staff to submit it. I mentioned grants, the community development block grant is a big one. Sometimes that can be beneficial to a city in hundreds of thousands of dollars, as well as there are various grants for parks and other programs. So this is our regional housing needs allocation. Most of the cities in this county are not able to meet our needs. The very low-income goal, our low-income, moderate income, we're doing better with the above-moderate income goal. Last year it was 12%. The very low-income goal, it actually went from 18% down to 14% because we had those really nice affordable housing apartment projects that we were able to put in our report, and so we don't have that this year. There were building permits issued in 2018 as compared to 13 the year before. The progress report, it has a series of programs from our general plan, and basically, we look at the program, and then we look to see what work we've done the past year to meet those goals, whether it's zoning amendments to allow transitional housing by right instead of by a CUP, whether it talks about going forward for complete streets, which are better for the public, not only aesthetically with the landscaping, as well as wider sidewalks and more greenery between the traffic and the pedestrians, so that's safer. Another one concerns design throughout the city art. The city council pairing up with high school students to do utility box art is one of those programs that we've been successful with. Another one was kind of a short program, and it didn't really bring a lot of people downtown, but as part of our economic development, we had kind of a "We're Snoopy" on social media to get people to come downtown and look for him. With our housing element, the two that we were most successful with as far as working on those programs is Crossroads West Specific Plan. It's been a program that we would annex that property into the city and work on increased housing opportunities, and so we've been steadily working toward that. The success of it, the annexation, is still up in the air. It still has to go to LAVCO this summer, but hopefully next year on this report, you'll see that we were successful and could close out that program. Another program was the OP sites. It's a site on the web, and what that does is it allows cities to show off vacant or underutilized parcels. So somebody who's looking for a project to build some housing or build some commercial can see that piece of property, know how big it is, who the property owner is, and contact them, and hopefully that facilitates more development in the city. So we have 22 programs that are ongoing right now, and then two that have been completed since 2016. And so the process then is, the next city council meeting, I'll be giving them a similar presentation, and there'll be a resolution that hopefully they'll approve, and we'll submit that to the city, or to the state, and then we'll be all ready for upcoming grants.
Thank you, Donna. I did notice that Mayor O'Brien, I believe it might have been the last city council, or maybe the state of the city address, mentioned the fact that the city doesn't build these projects. We invite people to come in and build low-income housing, modern housing, things like that.
Yes, it's a very difficult balance. I mean, the state wants us to build housing, but as you said, we don't actually build it. All we can do is try to make the conditions better. Like, two years ago, we upzoned a property from R1 to R3, hoping that that would bring in an affordable project. So there's little things that the city can do to try to encourage developers, but it comes right down to obstacles of funding. They have to rely a lot on state tax credits, the availability of land, and hopefully bringing in crossroads will give us that edge right there. And there's a third one as well. Anyway, there are small things that we can do to try and encourage that type of housing in the city. Oh, work on ordinances and resolutions that would maybe provide some incentives for them, which is really difficult since we don't have a redevelopment agency any longer.
Thanks, Donna. Are there any other questions for Donna? Okay, moving along. Item five, any comments from the planning commissioners? Hearing none. Item six, county referrals and correspondence information. Hearing of none. We'll move to item seven, staff comments.
I would like to give you an update on our food truck pilot program. We actually issued our first permit, and it's for a shaved ice vehicle to be at Silva Park. So we have the location set on the map, and her hours are Monday through Thursday from 8 to 4. She'll be capturing a lot of soccer practice and kids in the park. We have a second one that's in process right now. There's some things we have to work out, but it looks as though they're trying to bring in a pizza truck on Fridays near their business. Since the first one was issued, and I believe it was the 28th of March, that's when the six months of the pilot program starts, so that'll take us to the end of September. So as more and more people want to come in, and I've got 11 more people on my list that have gotten applications but have not returned them yet, so as that goes on, they'll have shorter and shorter times unfortunately until we get to that end date. Then there'll be a presentation to the city council on how the program works, and they'll either modify it or extend it, or if there's problems, they may even end it. But so far, so good. It looks like we've got a good group of people interested, and hopefully we can find them each a spot to operate.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just for information, the pizza place has moved across the street on Santa Fe.
That's correct. Pizza Plus has had their opening, I believe it was last Friday, and they are working with ABC now to transfer their beer and wine license, but you can go over there and enjoy the pizza, and it's absolutely beautiful inside. They did a very good job remodeling that building.
Yes, thanks, Donna. I have a motion to adjourn. You want to go home?
You call me Steve, let Steve do it.
Steve!
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
No one can leave. No one can leave until there's a motion.